The whole meeting from six to seven, then we'll have a budget, a regular board meeting from seven to whenever, and then resume the committee of the whole meeting afterwards. So with that being said, I call the committee of the whole meeting for March 3rd, 2020 to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Cameron.
Here.
Carbonell.
Here.
Danny.
Here.
Gabrenia.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
President Wallace. Here. Our finance and golf committee chairman, Danny, in charge of the budget review, so I turn it over to...
Basically, I'll just leave it at, we'll turn it over to Todd or staff. It looks like you're all prepared, ready, ready to go on this, so.
Ready to go.
Right.
We're gonna start the proposed budget review with the police department.
Okay.
All right, good evening. It's our pleasure to be here to present our budget to you this evening. It's hard to believe it's that time of year again already. So we'll start off with our budget highlights. Our 2021 budget has increased by 7%, which is attributed mostly to a request to add three additional police officers, as well as the vehicles and equipment costs associated with adding those new officers, as well as the pension transfer expenses, which were reviewed earlier with the annual levy. The addition of the three officers will allow for the department to increase its minimum staffing of patrol shifts. It'll also allow us to better deal with upcoming anticipated retirements, as well as succession planning. This budget also includes a request to add two squad cars to our fleet, as well as the equipment to outfit them, which is necessary due to the addition of the three police officers. Last year, you asked me as far as equitable sharing funds goes to put those on the front page here, so this budget is requesting to utilize $176,700 in equitable sharing funds, and out of those, in capital, $80,000 in equitable sharing would be used for two squad cars for the three new officers, and then $34,000 equipment, for the equipment for those cars, $4,500 for video management and viewing software, and $5,800 for remote command view system for our drone. And then in professional development, I've got $19,900 for senior management institute for police for two commanders, and with all the issues with fund, lack of funding for a let's be, we're gonna have to pay for our academy slots now, so I've got $32,500 budgeted for five academy positions for five officers. And I'll talk more about those when we get into those categories. Moving on to our strategic plan, short-term goals. Under the first goal, enhance public awareness, we're looking to continue to utilize our Facebook and Twitter social media accounts to inform residents about services, activities, and community events. That's really been a big positive for our department. I was telling some of you earlier that seems like everywhere I go, someone's always asking me, who is responsible for doing your social media account, and can we hire them? So we're proud of that. We're also gonna be applying for more traffic safety and bulletproof vest replacement grants. We're gonna continue citizen police academy classes that have been so successful in order to build positive, positive relationships, promote understanding, and build trust. Moving on to our second goal of enhancing community events, we've been in the process of working toward creating a special event permit application, along with Village, the Village, the Fire District, and Park District, to help ensure individuals and organizations applying for permits abide by all conditions, ordinances, codes, and requirements, and also have provided emergency action plans in order to make the events as safe as possible. So we're hoping to get that before the board to review in a few months or so. As far as our complex goals, maintaining or enhancing village standards for service delivery, we think that we can enhance those standards with the addition of three police officers. I already talked about increasing minimum staffing. We'll also be able to increase the number of officers available for special events and grants, as well as be more visible in neighborhoods. And because it takes so long to hire officers and, and get them through the training, with the anticipated retirements, we're gonna need to stay ahead of that, and we're already down two police officers right now, because we had a commander recently retire a couple weeks ago, and just before him, another officer left to go to another department. So we're authorized for 56. Right now, we have 54. We're gonna continue to promote village standards for service delivery by utilizing our frontline software program. That's been a really good way for us to track what residents are looking for, and as well as our responses to that. So during 2019, our department utilized frontline to log 10,113 overnight parking requests, 444 vacation house watch checks, 1,105 directed patrols, and 142 condition reports, which are like street lights out, or something that the officer observes, that we can let public works know to take a look at. As far as our long-term goals go, working to maximize the capacity and talents of in-house staff and service capabilities. You've heard me talk a lot about succession planning lately. We wanna continue that for our command staff, and we're gonna seek to continue to seek out specialized leadership training programs, like Northwestern School of Police Staff and Command, as well as the Police Executive Research Forums Institute, Senior Management Institute for Police. We're also gonna continue to work toward getting all of our police officers trained in crisis intervention. Currently, we have about 20, or 81% of our staff trained in CIT, and one of the questions I was asked at our recent Kalia hearing in Covington, Kentucky, one of the assessors asked me why our use-of-force incidents are so low, when compared to other departments of our size. And really, I believe that this, having this number of officers trained in crisis intervention tactics, which is what CIT stands for, coupled with the fact that we have many of our officers trained in crisis intervention, or critical incident stress management, which is peer support for their, their fellow officers, as well as stressing de-escalation, so talking to people instead of putting hands on just because we can. What we're seeking is voluntary compliance, and we're finding that with all that training, we're able to get people to comply with us by just talking to them, instead of having to go hands-on with them, or use less lethal tools, and that really, I believe, results not only in better service to the community, but also a reduction in those number of use-of-force incidents. We're gonna also seek to get more officers trained in drug recognition experts, which is a big thing now with legalization of recreational cannabis. Currently, we're fortunate enough to have two officers trained as, as drug recognition experts, because there's only 159 statewide right now that are trained. So we've got two out of those 159. We've got another officer who's slated to go either in the spring or the fall, so we'll have three, and we're gonna continue to pursue that. In addition to that, we're looking to get more officers certified in advanced roadside impaired driving enforcement, which is referred to as A-Ride. As far as our complex goals, we're looking at developing a strategy to identify and complete roadway improvements and mitigation programs in design. We've been working toward creating a traffic calming policy, which we presented to you a couple board meetings ago, and we've been working with some of the residents that you asked us to get feedback from, and we're gonna readdress that policy and get it back to you in a couple weeks. We're also requesting to add some additional equipment to help our officers address residents' traffic complaints, including two new traffic data collectors. As far as the second goal, working with IDOT to improve traffic safety along Route 59, we've been aggressively pursuing traffic safety grants through IDOT's Division of Traffic Safety in order to promote roadway safety, and this year, we just filed our application. We're seeking grant funds for DUI enforcement, speed enforcement, occupant restraint, and distracted driving. So we're gonna continue to enforce those traffic laws through those grants. We're also gonna conduct directed traffic enforcement campaigns along Route 59 and Route 20. This is one of the goals I had for myself and my staff this year, is to be more visible on Route 20 and Route 59, because of the, the speeds are so high, that when there are crashes, they're more severe, and we're really seeking to reduce that and increase the safety on our roads. So we've really been focusing on speeding, impaired driving, distracted driving, reckless driving, and seatbelt and child safety seat violations, and we're gonna continue to do that. Some of the highlights from 2019, 2020 year, we had our Kalia onsite assessment in July. The assessors were here, they talked to our staff, they talked to many of you, and we went to Covington, Kentucky to have our hearing in November of 2019, and we were fortunate enough to come away with our seventh reaccreditation award, as well as designations for meritorious and excellence more Kalia. During the year, we also purchased our unmanned aircraft system, otherwise referred to as a drone, to be used during critical incidents, searches for missing persons, and that enhances efficiency and safety of our officers. And we have not had to use it yet, so that's a good thing, but we have it in case it's needed. We worked with Village Church of Bartlett to create the Bartlett Community Cares Initiative, which helps provide services to those in need. We saw a lot of benefit out of that program throughout the year as well. We presented several active shooter trainings to businesses and members of the community, and assisted religious organizations with creating a template that they can use to develop emergency action plans, and that was a result of a request at one of the religious leader meetings. We were also awarded the 2018 Railroad Safety Specialty Award as part of the Illinois Traffic Safety Challenge. One of our police officers, Jason Amor, was certified as a master tactical patrol officer. He's the 98th officer in the state to obtain that designation, so that's pretty impressive. Our detective Russ Yanko obtained his arson investigator certification. So police departments work with fire departments to investigate potential arsons, but because fire departments don't have the power of arrest, a police officer has to be an arson investigator in order to actually charge and arrest somebody. So we're proud of Russ for that. Jeff graduated from the FBI National Academy last spring. And then we've been working with the Fire District throughout the year to include tabletop and emergency management exercises, active shooter training, emergency action plan development, rescue task force training, CPR and first aid in response to metro train emergencies. So that was one of my goals, along with Chief Gabrenia's goal, is to get our departments working better together, so that when a critical incident occurs, we're familiar with each other, we know how each other operates, and, and we can do it professionally. So that's been good and very successful. Onto our police summary. So with the addition of the three officers, our estimated staff is going from 43 to 46. If those are improved, that would be the only change to our authorized staffing proposed for 20 and 21. As far as our service activities go, we're projecting an increase in those by about 5% from 29,300 to 30,765. Another increase, 5% increase in offenses, but a 1.5% increase in court cases, about a 4.5% increase in traffic enforcement, and an increase, a small increase in training Going on to our personal request detail, this is where I show the three new police officers that we were requesting, and part of this request results from a survey that we did not only in 2004, but we pulled that survey out and did it again this year, and in 2004, we were the second lowest of 10 communities our size in our area, as far as the number of officers per thousand residents, and in 2019, we were the lowest. So when we looked at that, and we look at all the projections we have for retirements, and officers that are out because of FMLA, or anything else they go out for, we think these three officers will help not only increase our staffing on the street, but build our bench, so that when, when those retirements are happening, and those other incidents are happening, we have staff that are available to step in and take up some of that slack. The issue is when we're down so many officers, all the work falls on the same number of officers. We had 410 hours of grant, traffic grants and other grants that we had, and when you have those grants, you have to fill them, and it has to be done on an overtime basis. So when we're down officers, that affects us even more, and then we have 40 community events that we do throughout the year. Five of those are multi-day events, so these officers will help us with that as well. Moving on to our capital outlay request, we're requesting two new patrol vehicles. Like I said, those would be used for the three new officers we're seeking to hire, and those would be funded out of the Equitable Sharing Fund. We're seeking to replace three patrol, or three patrol vehicles. They're all 2016 Ford Explorers. We did the Village Vehicle Replacement Guideline on those. We followed that, and all three came in at, over the criteria for high priority replacement. That's indicative of 28 points, and the three squads came in at 37 points, 38 points, and 36 points, indicating that they are high priority replacement vehicles. So they're all projected to have over 100,000 miles at the time of replacement, and we've spent about $21,000 on maintenance and repair of those vehicles. Number three is the equipment necessary to outfit the two new patrol vehicles. That includes light bar, cage, local radio, docking stations, in-car video cameras, computers, all the stuff needed to outfit a squad car, and that would be funded out of the Equitable Sharing Fund. Number four, desktop computer, three monitors and two computers for $2,100. That would be used to equip our workstations and records, and maximize our ability to achieve recent law mandates related to expungements of both juvenile and cannabis cases in the coming years. Number five is a sister media, multimedia duplicator for $1,500. All of our digital evidence is required to be stored on Blu-ray DVDs due to the large storage space. However, we don't have a Blu-ray duplicator, so this would give us the ability to burn that evidence to Blu-ray DVDs as it's needed for court. Number six is thermal printers for $2,250, three at $750 apiece. One is a replacement printer, and two are new, and the replacement printer is replacing a 20-year-old printer in our evidence room. One new printer is needed for forensic room for officers to use when entering evidence, and the other new printer would be in the evidence storage room. Number seven is the property license and annual software support that's needed to support our B software system that tracks all of our evidence. Number eight is pistol-rated shields. These shields allow officers to more effectively and safely respond to incidents involving offenders armed with pistols, edged weapons like knives, or other blunt force trauma weapons. So we're looking for two of those at $1,400 apiece. And then number nine is rifle-rated shields, two at $1,700 apiece. These shields provide ballistic coverage when the offender's armed with a rifle. These are a little bit different than our current rifle-rated shields, because they're smaller and lighter. So the advantage to these is that we can use them in smaller spaces, such as crawl spaces, stairs, or attics, or while inside a patrol vehicle attempting to rescue an officer or victim. Number 10 is an arson investigator kit. So Detective Yanko, who's our new arson investigator, needs some equipment for that position, and this will allow him to have that equipment to properly investigate arson scenes. Number 11 is in-house chargers and microphones. This is for our in-car camera system for our squad cars. What's happening right now is there's one microphone per camera system per car. So when the day shift officer comes off duty, he hands the microphone to the night shift officer, never has a chance to charge, so what's happening is officers are going out on the street, and they're making a traffic stop, or going to a call, and we go to review that video, and there's no audio, which is a problem, because the battery died, and, and the officer didn't know about it. So these microphones will give us the ability to keep some charged in the station, and then, instead of handing them off, they can swap them out, so that the microphones are always charged. Number 12 is traffic data collectors, two at $2,025 apiece, for a total of $4,050. These are used to develop strategies in identifying and completing roadway improvements and traffic mitigation programs. They do our traffic counts, we call them our traffic studies. The nice thing about these is the technology has allowed us to purchase these data collectors that collect data in both directions. Before, we used to have to put out two counters, one to capture one way, and one to capture the opposite way, and now we can put them out, one in each location, and it captures each, each data collector captures both directions. So these are the same price as we were being charged for one before, so we're getting a better deal with these. AEDs, Automated External Defibrillators. I took a look at our, the number of saves we've had from AEDs over the past five years. We've saved nine people by getting to scenes quickly and hooking up our AEDs and, and defibrillating them, so they're, they're necessary to replace them, because our current models are discontinued, and you can't get replacement parts, like batteries or pads anymore. The nice thing about the new ones is they're the same brand as the Fire District uses, so instead of the Fire District coming, removing our pads, putting on their pads, and then connecting to their defibrillator, they just leave our pads on, and they can connect them to their defibrillator and go, so it saves some time. Number 14 is the Input ACE Video Management Software. So this product will allow our agency to receive, review, and coordinate any and all video media types for evidentiary and investigative purposes. This is $4,500, and will be funded out of our Equitable Sharing Fund. The purpose of this is, what happens is when we have an incident at a gas station, or a burglary at a business, or something happens in a school, when we get the video, all that video is on different systems and has different players, or cellphone video, or whatever. Everything is, there's video of everything now. What this software will allow us to do is take that video in, and we don't need all those different players and things now. This will allow us to view any video that comes in, all in one spot. Number 15 is a severe wound care training kit. We're looking for two of these at $1,600 apiece. We're planning to train in medical response in January of this budget year, 2021. Kits will provide realistic hands-on training to stop bleeding from severe lacerations, puncture wounds, and gunshots, and we'll not only use this for our staff, we'll use it for our citizen police academies and things like that, to train other people, as well as how to stop severe bleeding. Number 16 is a Nomad Light Tower. It's $2,600. We have two light towers that are basically trailers with generators tow out to places. This is a portable light tower that we could carry into like a wooded area, or backyard, or something like that, if there were a crime scene, so that's what this would be used for. Number 17 is a laptop computer that would be used for presentations and local adjudication. That's $3,000. So we don't currently have a computer that officers or staff members can take when they have training at other places, so this, that's what this would serve for, as well as a backup to local adjudication hearings. Number 18 is a handheld thermal imager. We're looking for two of these at $800 apiece, and these devices assist officers in searching for, identifying, and locating offenders or victims while investigating or responding to a call for service in low light or darkness. Number 19 is a command, remote viewing system. This is for our drone, and will be funded out of the Equitable Sharing Fund. It's $5,800. So currently, with our drone, the only person that can see the video is, is the pilot who's controlling the drone. This would give us the capability from the EOC, or from a command post somewhere out in the field, to be able to make command-level decisions based off of the video that we're seeing from the drone. So our, our final thing is our leg extension machine in the gym downstairs needs to be replaced. That's $3,015. So that's it for our capital outlay. If there's no questions, I'll go ahead and move on to professional development.
I do have some questions, Chief. I mean, some of the things obviously are wants and needs, and I kinda look at some of these things and think, well, that's more of a want than a need. A couple of things. One, I'm assuming we already have pistol shields, and we have rifle shields that you mentioned, right? They're just, these are smaller, and they do the same thing? And, and the question would be, have we ever used the pistol and rifle shields, ever?
Yeah.
Yeah?
We use them quite a bit, actually.
Do you? Okay. The other thing I have a little concern about is the arson investigator kit, since we have the Fire Department that typically would do arson investigation, I would assume.
Well, I just explained that they, they, they can't charge someone, so they bring a police officer out to assist them in the investigation, and then if there's gonna be a charge for the arson, then the officer files the arson charge, and that's how we prosecute it. Fire, the Fire Department doesn't have the ability to be an arson investigator, because there's no, they don't have any law enforcement authority. So he needs that equipment to go into the fire scenes and do the investigation in conjunction with the Fire Department.
All right. And then the last thing I had a question on is a severe wound training kit. When we have paramedics, it would certainly be on site, if not as fast as you, but almost as fast, I would have to assume.
So one of the things we use it for is, well, first of all, in Aurora, at the Henry Pratt Incident, they had to do a lot of their own trauma care themselves, because when a scene is hot, the Fire Department won't go in. They'll go into warm zones, but they, they won't go into hot zones. So when our officers are in there, if an officer's down, or a civilian is down, they can start treating that person, if, because they carry, they carry combat gauze, they carry tourniquets, they carry all that stuff on their person now. So we can start treating people, and that's what this training, this wound kit would be used for, as far as the training for that.
Well, that in and of itself concerns me a little bit, because I don't know what kind of wound care training you're really gonna get as an officer at a scene compared to a paramedic. I mean, that's, even if you can be there applying pressure on a wound, I suppose, it's something better than nothing, but, you know, I'd hate for an officer to be in there and do something that wasn't correct and cause issues in some way. So, I don't know. I, I just, I get it. I mean, things to have, but needs and wants.
Chief?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
As far as the arson kit, is there a way we could call the Cook County or DuPage County Task Force to investigate and handle it, instead of us having our own arson team?
Well, I suppose we could. I, you know, the question was always, why don't we have our own arson investigator for years? So that, we got him trained this year, and now he went through all the training, it would be kind of a waste to not give him the equipment that he needs to, to do it.
But don't we pay for them?
Arson?
No, the task force.
The task force? I don't know if the arson task force is a part of those other task forces or not, but I could find that out.
Yeah. I'll piggyback some of the, just questions that Trustee Cameron, Trustee Hopkins had. When we have a, it seems, I remember when we have active shooter situations, we bring in that task force. What's the acronym?
Well, we, there's several, so usually there's NIPIS, which is a SWAT team.
Yeah, yeah. And you mentioned that you use those shields a lot. In that situation, I saw the NIPIS guys with their own shields, so I'm wondering, you said that if you use them a lot, is it just in precautionary measures when you're entering a place or something?
So sometimes when we get called to, you know, somebody's threatening suicide, or they've got themselves barricaded in their house, or whatever, we're the first ones that are there. That SWAT team's not getting there for 45 minutes to an hour, so we have to be able to handle those scenes until somebody gets there. And a lot of those, you know, active shooter incidents, we're going in, we're not waiting for a SWAT team. Something happens at a school or a business, we're going in, and we need that equipment to protect our officers and protect the people that are inside.
So we would still use the old shields and just get some new ones that might be a little more nimble?
Yes.
Okay. And then the, the number 16 and 18, I had the numbers on the Nomad Light Tower, which, again, I think we've got a light tower now, but it's obviously not as portable as this one?
Yeah, this one can be.
Describe to me an instance where we would like use that.
So we used it, we used it last year. We actually borrowed one from Hanover Township to help cross people. When the sidewalk or the bike path was torn up down here by the horse farm for the Fourth of July, we brought it out there, it lit up that crossing. Our other two were down in the, at the fest, being occupied down there. If an incident happened in somebody's backyard, a crime scene, we can't get a trailer through a fence and into the backyard, so we would be able to pick, pick that up, carry it into the backyard, set it up, and use it there in an instance like that. If something happened in a wooded area where we couldn't get a trailer in, we would use it for something, you know, those types of incidents.
We don't wanna have to rely on Hanover Township.
No, I agree with that. And the handheld thermal imager, and again, kind of on the same lines as Trustee Cameron, have we ever borrowed anybody's that we've had to use, or is that just a precautionary type?
We, I think the Fire Department helped us out one time. They-
So the only, the only reference I have to that is that Boston bomber thing, where they image the guy in the boat? That's what it's similar to?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Gotcha.
Maybe we can just get one instead of-
Okay. Gotcha. Is there a way we can just get one instead of two?
Sure, we could try one and see how it works or if we get some use out of it. Yeah.
Okay.
Same thing with the shields. Is there any reason we need two of them?
Again, I, we have, so I, I kind of predicted that I would get questioned about the shields because it's come up in prior budget meetings. Those are our shields. So one is a rifle-rated shield, which is-
We can't, we can't see them, Chief.
Okay. So this is a pistol shield and it's pretty heavy. And trying to go around stairway or getting in and out of a car with it or something, it's big and it's cumbersome. This shield will not protect us from rifle-rated rounds. That shield is much heavier than this shield. And when you're having to hold it for a long period of time or maneuver in a house or up a stairwell in a school, we need something smaller, which is what those smaller rifle-rated shields will allow us to do. If you're holding this up for a long time, you're going to get tired pretty quick. So we're looking for things that give us options, which is why we're not asking to buy two more of the big shield. We're looking for things that will serve us, serve a purpose and makes, make it more flexible in the event that we need to respond to a, to an incident where we could utilize one.
I'm not, I'm not in a big rush to spend money. However, I do support the shields. It seems to make sense to me if we have, God forbid, one of these terrible events in town, I want the police department to have every tool that they need to aggressively respond and protect our residents. Thermal imaging camera, I can see splitting that baby in half. I think we've talked about thermal imaging cameras before. I know there's one on the drone. I feel like we've spent a lot of time talking about those. I don't know how likely it is that, you know, Timmy's going to be lost in the woods, but maybe one camera ought to, ought to do the trick. Between that camera and the one on the drone, I am right, there is one on the drone?
There is.
So maybe between just one handheld unit and one on the drone, that makes sense?
Are all the officers trained in the use of the AEDs?
Yes.
Do you consider, I know you mentioned you guys had nine saves with the AEDs. Do you consider that a high number? Or, I know it probably fluctuates, but-
I, you know, I, I don't know what I would compare it to. All I would say is, I know how thankful people are-
Yeah.
-that we got there and that we were able to bring them back with the use of the AEDs.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay. Moving on to professional development. So as far as our professional development goes, as far as conferences, well, we're looking to get another officer trained in accident reconstruction. So those first three classes through Northwestern are for that purpose. As far as conferences go, we've got the Kalia Conference coming up, Little Rock, Arkansas. I'm looking to send the accreditation manager and deputy chief to that conference in November. This is going to help them get through the sixth edition updates that Kalia is putting out and will be required to comply with. The next page, we've got the International Association of Chiefs of Police that I've got myself and a deputy chief slated to go to. That'll be in New Orleans in October. We've, we're looking to send some officers to the Tactical Officers Association Conference in Oakbrook in November. The Illinois Public Employer Labor Relations Association Conference in Galena for myself and another command staff member. And then the last one, the Drug, Terrorists, and Criminal Interdiction Conferences for our officer who is assigned to the DEA. That's a conference that she needs to go to for her position. On the next page, as far as our succession planning goes, we're looking to get another sergeant through Northwestern's School of Staff and Command and two new sergeants through the two-week supervision of police personnel for Northwestern. And then two command staff members to the Police Executive Research Forum Senior Management Institute for Police, which will be funded out of the equitable sharing fund. Everything else in firearms and defensive tactics is consistent with what we had this year. And then on the next page, like I mentioned earlier, we have to start budgeting for our police academy fees. Previously, Lettsby was reimbursing the academies directly for academy fees, so we weren't having to pay those out of our budget. But with their current fiscal issue that they're in with lack of funding, they've notified every police department that we'll be responsible for paying for our own academy spots now. And other than that, that's pretty much it for professional development.
Chief, can, can you tell me a little bit more about the Police Executive Research Forum?
Sure. So that is a executive-level, nationally-recognized command staff training. So it's three week, it's a three-week program in Boston. I've been to it and before me Deputy Chief Snyder, Deputy Chief Leonis, and Chief Williams all had attended it. And what I'm seeking to do, again, is to get my staff through so that when I retire and other people retire, there's people that have already been through it. And I think one of the good things about it is we're able to use equitable sharing funds for that. So as you're aware, we have to use those funds for certain purposes. And equipment and training is a good use for those funds. So that's what I'm seeking to do. I know it's a big expense, but I think we get a lot of value out of it. We get a lot of good experience and it's a good networking opportunity as well for, where you discuss issues that are going on throughout the nation and how different agencies are addressing those issues. So I think it's a, it's a really good program and I'm excited to get people through it.
Thank you.
As far as our professional association goes, we don't have many changes to it. Some of the major expenses in professional association are for the two children's advocacy centers, Cook County Advocacy Center and DuPage County Children's Advocacy Center, as well as the task forces we're part of. So Major Case Assistance Team and Metropolitan Emergency Response Investigations Team. One is the Cook County Task Force, one is DuPage County. And then we've got our SWAT team, NIPIS, in there as well. Other than that, not many changes to the professional development detail. So overall, in looking at our public safety expenditures, our salaries are a 5% increase and a lot of that's due to the increase to add three new officers. Overtime salaries I increased. A lot of that has to do with what we've spent this year because of an increase in community requests for extra security. So we call them extra duty assignments or extra duty details where these organizations are paying our officers overtime to come out and provide security for their own events. And they reimburse us for that, but it still comes out of our overtime budget. Employee retirement contributions, we've got a 6% increase due to new personnel. And then we've got an increase in cost plus new personnel, which, which is attributed to the increase in group insurance. As far as service agreements go, there's an increase due to our Celebrite Agreement. Computer services went down a little bit because we paid off our records management system during the last fiscal year. Our advertising fees are up because we've got a police test coming up this summer, so we have to advertise for that. Our communications fees went up a little bit for DUCOM. And then the vehicle setup is way up because we've got more vehicles to set up than last year. Last year, we had one vehicle that we were setting up and this vehicle, we've got five. So. Our uniform line item decreased about 10% because we have less bulletproof vest replacements that are coming due this year. And then automotive supplies are up about 8% because we budgeted, budgeted for some extra fuel for those two new patrol vehicles and the three new officers. Equipment maintenance materials is down about 9% because we don't think we'll have as many computer hardware repairs. Professional development is down about 8% due to reduction in training costs. Planning and research has decreased about 9% because we don't have a reaccreditation coming up this year. Our safety program expenses went up about $8,000 or 61%. We need to purchase some more gas masks, pouches, and filters. Not everybody has one. And, and the filters that we have are expiring, so we have to buy more filters for those. For emergency management, went down about 11% because we're not looking to purchase any equipment this year. And the Police and Fire Commission is up about 82% because we, this is a rare year where we're going to have a police officer test and a sergeant's test in the same year. Usually, police officer tests are once every two years. Sergeant's tests are once every three years. So this is a rare year where we have to do both in the same year. Machinery equipment is down about 43%. Less equipment requests. Equitable sharing is up because we're seeking to use some of those funds for new patrol vehicles as well as the police academy fees for five officers. And then police pension transfer is up due to increased pension obligations. So all that combined together equates to a 7% increase in our budget this year.
Can you talk about the increase in the DUCOM fees?
Sure. So what DUCOM does every year, for police and fire districts or departments are factored differently. So for police departments, they set their fees based on the authorized number of sworn police officers that you have. So every year, when they're computing their fees, or they divide it equally over the police departments and it's all done by the number of sworn officers. So they budgeted for an increase in their fees and that was passed along to us and that's why the increase. So one of the impacts of that is what they've, what they started doing this year is they're calling it a five-year smoothing, which is an average. So they take an average of our authorized sworn staff members over five years. So even though we're seeking to increase our staff by three years this year for sworn staff, we won't see that impact right away because it's averaged in over a five-year period.
Thank you. Chief, do you have an idea what the reimbursement amount is of that $550,000 that we spend in community requests?
Good question. I thought I had brought that with me. I want to say, I looked at it earlier today and I thought I grabbed it. It was about $27,000 in that ballpark, what we, what we spent this year through July, or through, not through July, through January for those requests. So.
And we get reimbursed from different organizations?
We do. They sign a contract or they sign an agreement with us and it's based off the officer's salary as well as if we provide a squad car, there's some billing as far as that goes as well.
And one of the, one of my pet peeves, I guess, in budgeting is, and I don't want to be nitpicky, but you've got materials and supplies where consistently we've used $36,000 approximately. And we budgeted $63,000 last year and now we're budgeting $63,650 this year. I'd really rather see that budgeted to what we actually use.
Okay. Oh, I see what you're saying.
It looks fairly consistent with $36,000, $37,000 over the last three fiscal years or so. Similar on office supplies. And I applaud you for not using the amount that you're budgeted there. I think that's very, very nice, but I'd rather not have it so high.
I think one of the things we were trying to predict was how much cost would be attributed to expungements, mailings, things like that. So we're still in the process of doing that and figuring that out. So we'll take a good look at that again next year and see if we can come in at a, at a better, more accurate number.
That, that whole expungement effort's going to be a nightmare for your staff, isn't it?
It's a lot of work. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of mailings. It's, it's just, you know, one of the hard things to do is trying to figure out, how do you expunge microfilm or microfiche? So that's something that everybody's trying to figure out because it's all mandated, not only for juveniles, but also for some of the cannabis violations.
The state isn't paying for that. We're not getting a grant to deal with their legislative change.
Yeah, correct. It's another unfunded mandate that we have to deal with. It depends on when it all happened. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Does that conclude your presentation then?
If there's no other questions, yeah, that will conclude our presentation.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief. How long will admin take there, Madam Administrator?
Um, we could start, um, we could start planning. Oh, first one is down, 10, 16, 18.
Okay.
Go forward.
Do it.
I can name that team now. For, for any questions?
Yeah.
That's it.
I don't know, she hasn't told.
Thing breaker.
So, um-
Thank you, Pfeiffer.
Yeah.
Planning and Development. Ready?
Yeah, go.
Okay.
Budget.
So this is the first Planning and Development Services budget in the village's history. It's a result of combining both community development and building departments to allow residents and business owners a one-stop shop for all development and permitting activities that occur in the village. Todd was nice enough to help us out since this is our first ever combined budget. He went back several years and combined both budgets for us to have an analysis and a comparison. And by doing that, we are proposing to increase our budget by 7%. No new positions are being requested and no new vehicles are being requested this year. Following the strategic plans, goals, and objectives, we are implementing, implementing the use of technology in providing services and municipal operations and evaluating purchases for environment-friendly alternatives. And by following that lead, our budget is, includes a request to purchase a new permit tracking system. This new system would be linked to the village's GIS system and would integrate code enforcement, building inspections, and contractor licensing to provide a more efficient and expedited system with our permitting. Going to the next page. I, I'm not going to hit every highlight. If I miss one that you would like to have further discussion on it, I'd be happy to do that. But I thought I'd just go through a couple of them. We were awarded our Seoul Smart Gold Standard by the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus this year for our solar panel permit processing, which takes only three days and is done online. And staff is currently working with GIS to develop what I would call an interactive development map. And what that is, is if someone is driving around town and sees surveyors or dirt is being moved or walls are going up on a new construction site, I want them to be able to go to a map online on our village website and get factual information of exactly what is going in there. So they could hover on the map and information would pop up. It would also tell you where it is in the process. Has a building permit been issued? Is it going up to the Plan Commission for a public hearing? All of that information would be readily available for the residents. On the next page, another highlight that we had this year was the approval of the Form Based Code, which will provide developers with a clear guide on what is required to expedite the zoning and building process here in the downtown. The next page. We continue to utilize the GoRequest system for our code complaints. And if we do get a phone call that's not through the GoRequest system, we try to inform the residents, hey, did you know about this system? You can do this online. We are held accountable and must respond within a certain timeframe. And then you can- can evaluate us on our response. So we always try to push that so that everything is documented. We continue to coordinate, monitor, and review techniques for cost savings within our new department, since we are combining our budgets. And our green strategies continue with the recent issuance of our Chromebooks to both the Plan Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals. And the Zoning Board has used their Chromebooks twice now, very successfully, and we will find out next Thursday how the Plan Commission does. It'll be their first time. The next page. In June of this year, CMAP once again awarded us another grant for both the villages of Bartlett and Streamwood to develop a bike path plan. We are moving forward with that very shortly, as a matter of fact, coming your way. The PDS staff, along with administration, continues to work with a developer for approximately 200 apartments on a six-acre portion of the village-owned property at Lake and 59. And with that, I'm going to skip ahead to our development surveying page, page eight. And we are asking, you'll see, no additional staff. Our building permit review sets continue to increase. Code complaints have remained fairly steady over the years, and our building inspections continue to increase, and we're well over the 6,000 mark. Turning the page again. We are, under personnel requests, we are asking for no personnel. And then finally, on page 10, is our capital outlay request. And you'll see, our first priority is a permit tracking system with Viewpoint Cloud. They're under the umbrella of OpenGov. And I analyzed some of our permit data this year, and what I found is that 40 percent of all the permits that we issue are under three types of projects: roofs, siding, and windows. And all of these permit applications are very simple and easy to fill out on paper. And with this permit tracking system, it would also be easy to apply for those online. This system would allow that to occur. The entire process would be completely transparent to the resident or customer. Residents would be able to view a workflow status bar, and it's the same one the staff would see, that we would see the same screen. It would, and they would be allowed to follow along the entire permit process. They would be able to view where the permit may be held up, if their contractor is licensed, or if an inspection passed or failed. And they would be able to view a picture attached to the inspection results, and they can see all of this information in real time as soon as it happens. They would have also access to this information 24/7, and not have to wait to call the office the next morning, when we are open to find out if the inspection passed. So it's saving staff time, it's saving phone calls, the resident knows if they passed or not, and if they failed, why they failed, and they have a picture of it. The visibility of this workflow status bar would hold our employees accountable, not only in the office, but out in the field, while also holding contractors responsible for keeping their licenses current. The system would automatically send out reminders to contractors when their licenses are about to expire, which is primarily our biggest delay in issuing a permit. Staff believes this system is very intuitive, it's completely flexible, it's technically advanced, it's transparent, and would expedite the entire permit process. Does anybody have any questions?
Is that mostly for the benefit of, like, general residents applying for permits and contractors, or is it...
It is. For both.
Any type of a cost-savings measure?
It's for both. And, you know, it's hard to describe that how, right now, the system that we have is so not transparent, and it is affecting our efficiency and our staff time immensely.
This would free up quite a bit of staff hours, wouldn't it?
Yes. And it's also the beginning, if this is approved, to allow future add-ons at lower costs for reviewing huge plans online. Of course, we have to get, you know, staff, some of us older staff, it takes a little bit longer to get used to that kind of thing, but it's coming, and it's all going to eventually be digital.
Just a limited amount that I've seen here. I think this is an outstanding program, and I want to compliment you and SNAF on the work and the efforts that they put forth in preparing this.
Thank you. One side note, too, it says in here, and I apologize for the typo, it says the annual cost in here of $37,000. Well, with this system, we would be the first in Illinois to utilize this, and they really worked with us on the pricing, and I've got it down to 28,810. So it would not be 37, but 28 for our annual costs. And then our second capital outlay would be tablets, one for the planner, so that she can go paperless at our meetings. And then, this would be the first tablet to go to a building inspector out in the field to integrate with this system. Any questions? Okay. Moving on to professional development. There is no new professional development being requested. They are, it's the same as last year. Primarily, it's for continuing education and to maintain our certification and licenses. Moving on to the, let's see, Professional Association detail. These are all existing professional associations, with the exception of the mosquito abatement on the bottom of the sheet, page 13. We are trying to do cross-training. Currently, we only have our health officer that is qualified in mosquito abatement, and you'd be surprised how many pools that are abandoned and mosquitoes are there, and we have to go out and take a look at those. And I'd like to cross-train our code officer to be able to do that as well. And so that is the only new professional association detail that we have.
So, let me stop you there. So Cory goes out in the field with this license, and he finds this stagnant pool.
Mm-hmm. There are tablets that you can throw into the pool...
Okay.
... that will abate the mosquitoes.
And he doesn't get to deploy those without a license?
Well, it's, it's, yeah, I would say that he goes out, and this past year, he's been training with our health officer to learn what there is associated with mosquito abatement. And I feel that for him to be licensed, he would be a great backup in case our health officer is out of the office. Moving on to page 15 for our expenditures. You'll notice that our salaries have actually gone down 1 percent. Our group insurance is up slightly with the renewal rate increase. We have document imaging services, that is up slightly. We continue to want to scan the large documents so that we can put those into our laser fiche system and allow our first responders access to that, including the fire department. Our plan review fees are up. This is due to us wanting to make sure that with all of our projects coming in, that we are able to pay our consultant, and these fees are 100 percent reimbursed by the developers. So because of the large number that's coming in, we just want to make sure that we're covered. And then, under Plan Development Inspection Services, this is a new line item. These are for our employees that are contracted when our plumbing inspector and electrical inspector are not in the office. We contract their, those jobs out, and it previously was under temporary salaries, but they're not technically a village employee, and so finance and myself have created this new line item for those contractual services.
It's not a new expense.
No, it's not a new, it's just a new line item. Right. Professional development has gone up slightly, and that is due to registration increases. And then we have the machinery and equipment, which is the permit tracking system. Any questions? On the last page, again, it just outlines our items that are budgeted over $5,000. It's our Plan Development Inspection Services, and our automotive supplies for nine inspector vehicles, the maintenance of those inspector vehicles, our office supplies, which include the ICC stickers, and our contingencies for emergency board up and cleanup of any vacant houses. We do that every year, and that amount has not increased.
Good, good.
16 minutes.
Look at that.
Fine.
Anybody have any questions for Roberta? Thank you, Roberta.
Okay.
That'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Cameron, seconded by Trustee Hopkins. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Cameron.
Here.
Carbonaro.
Here.
Danny.
Any recess?
Gabrenia.
Yes.
Hopkins. Ranky.
Yes.
We are adjourned. We're going to... Information Technology, Geographical Information Systems, and the main office. That consists of the Finance Department. But for budget purposes, we only charge the accounting, finance, and the main office staff to the Finance Department. IT, GIS, utility billing are billed out. Utility billing is water, sewer. IT and GIS are charged to Central Services Fund. This budget does include a 14 percent increase to the Finance Department from the prior year. The majority of that is because we are proposing to fill the accounting position that's been I'm going to skip right to the strategic plan. I'm just going to highlight one of our objectives. The Moody's, affirmation of the village's AA1 rating is supportive of our goal of maintaining our financially strong position, and that's also one of our highlights for the year. That was part of our 2019 bond refunding. I'm going to skip right to our summary. As you can see towards the upper right corner there, on Personnel Services, Personnel Services does make up 82 percent of the fund, so basically, we're just personnel, so we're adding, we're requesting to add one more to that. As you can see, on the full-time equivalents, we're going to move from 12 to 13. Now, the part in this budget is just seven, seven and a half, and that would move to eight and a half. Our activity measures are pretty consistent with the prior years. Moving on to more about the accounting position. Again, this position needs to be filled to complete the monthly accounting activities. Now, that includes reconciling bank activity, general ledger, posting general ledgers, completing journal entries, account reconciliations, assisting with the month end, also with the audit, annual audit, and annual budget processes, part of the accounting procedures. We also need this position to fill in as a backup to our accounts payable positions and our payroll positions. We've been going two, almost three years without this position squeezing by on the minimum, and we also need this position for our succession planning, as I was telling the others, that the last time we hired someone in our accountant, accounting department was 16 years ago, and so all but one is right at about retirement age. So we need to get somebody in there, get them trained to be able to take over as people move on. So on here, it shows the cost of an accountant. They start at about 57. There are no capital outlay requests. In regard to professional development, pretty much the basic for our professional development, two to the Illinois Government Finance Officer Association Conference in Springfield this year, and then some local training. Associations, as well as the National and the State Finance Officers Association. As far as the line item detail, again, it breaks out the details, or shows what the personnel costs are. You'll see this in each department. Employee retirement contributions, IMRF contributions are up. The rate is up 19 percent compared to the prior year, so you see that in most departments that are heavy on IMRF. Police was not as much, because only the non-sworn are in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. And group insurance premiums were up 12 percent from the prior year. Other line items to note is, in our audit services, we only do the OPEB, other post-employment benefits. That's a calculation that's only done every three years, so that varies. And contingencies, we're up a little bit this year due to some furniture in regard to moving departments around, but they should be back down to... So overall, department's up 14 percent. That's basically it, unless there's any questions on the Finance Department.
Where did you come up with the annual salary for the accountant position?
The annual salary is based on payroll ranges that we have for each category of employees. So that's, and our HR department does annual reviews, comparables with other towns. That's where we come up with. That would be right at about the bottom of the range.
And we don't have, we don't have a tiered healthcare plan? Everyone receives the same healthcare, no matter what position you have?
We budget the healthcare, everybody, each full-time person is based on that $21,000 this year.
Mm-hmm. Is it the same plan?
We do not all have the same, there are, I'm not sure what you mean by tier. You can, you can pick HMO, or the PPO, or the hire plan.
I can answer that question. So when we hire someone, there's no way of knowing what plan they're going to enroll in, HMO, PPO, whether or not they're going to have family coverage. So what we do is we calculate an estimated value based on current enrollments and anticipated enrollments for new employees. So we try to guesstimate that, and then it's really a cumbersome system that we use to calculate that $21,000. So it could potentially be less than that, but that's right around the average that we place there for our current enrollments and then anticipated employees that we have.
But no matter, no matter what, any employee, current or new employees coming in, can choose any plan they want, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you have more, you had a question? About the salary and how we arrived at that? Was Todd able to answer that question for you?
I think he did.
Okay.
Thank you. Unless if you have anything else you would like to add? Okay. That's it. You can go on.
Okay. Any others? If not, I'm going to turn it on to Chris. Chris is going to be going over the central services budget.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity. As you probably know, the central services budget is the budget that's used to account for anything that's really not attributable to a single department, such as cleaning services, building maintenance, utilities. It also includes some portion of IT and the GIS staff. This year, we're not asking for any new personnel. We have a, unlike most years, our capital outlay request is pretty minimal this year. We have just a few items. There's no desktop... There's no desktop replacements this year. As you know, we replace them every four years, but we do a third of them every year, so we always skip year four. So this year, the first item is our, we're asking for disaster recovery service appliance and implementation. This service will provide us a local appliance that we back up to locally for quick restores and server recoveries. But more importantly, it includes a hosted solution. The hosted solution will provide a couple opportunities for us. One, it'll give us a place to store our backups offsite. I'm sure you're aware, many newspaper articles about ransomware in towns that have been hit by ransomware, and it takes them days, weeks, sometimes longer to recover. And that's because sometimes even their backups are compromised because the ransomware wasn't able to access that. This, by storing the backups in the cloud, this would prevent that kind of access to those, and so it would keep them from being affected by a ransomware infection. The other opportunity it provides us is if this building was hit by a natural disaster and it took out our server room, it would allow us to get all of our servers running up in the cloud. We would be able to access different servers and services. So we'd be able to recover much quicker with less downtime. So that's what that's about. The second item is network switches. Again, these are, these are switches that provide the network connectivity between all the devices on all of our networks. We're just, we're at capacity. We need to do additional switches to provide the connectivity we need between devices. The third item is a GPS receiver. We have a single GPS receiver that's used by our GIS staff to go out and look through utilities and maintain our GIS database. The existing one, the operating system is no longer supported. It ran on the 3G network, which has now been discontinued. So we're looking to replace that device. Our fourth item is a mobile device management system. You know, we've been rolling out iPads to a lot of our field staff because it allows them to access the information they need out in the field, prevents them from having to come back in, look something up and come back, allows them to do data entry out there. But it's a bit of a management problem for us to make sure that they're all up to date, they've all got the right security patches on them, that we can push out software updates when needed. And, you know, God forbid they get lost or stolen, we would have the ability to wipe them. So we're looking for a three-year subscription for that. Is there any questions about any of those items? Okay. Onto professional development. Nothing's changed from previous years. We're keeping it at the same levels. We don't always use all of our professional development, but unfortunately, you know, technology changes quite a bit. So we do try to put money out there so we can take our classes. They are on the expensive side, but unfortunately, they're a necessary evil. Nothing's changed in our professional associations. And as far as the line item, we're, the budget's actually down again 7% this year, primarily because of our capital equipment items request are so low. The rest of the items, computer services is up a bit this year for, because we're renewing our three-year VPN software maintenance agreement and the addition of the additional disaster recovery service that we're looking to add. We did increase the cleaning budget. Again, I don't, you know, I've been doing the central services budget review for 20-odd years. I don't necessarily spend the money that I budget for. I just do the accounting part of it. So if you've got any questions about the cleaning budget, I'd have to defer to some other staff. And then same thing with the increased coverage of village hall maintenance items. But I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have had about the line item detail.
So the increase in the cleaning budget, is that due to the new police station?
The cleaning service contract, which you'll actually see in an upcoming agenda for renewal, when we went out to RFP was during the police construction. And the current company that, we accepted their bid, underanticipated even though the new footprint was within the documents that were in the RFP. So what we did was, we budgeted for that new footprint and prorated the square footage. And that's where you see the increase in costs. But I think that will undercut that by a significant amount due to staff recommendation that you'll see at an upcoming board meeting, if that answers your question. All right, well, thank you.
Administration.
What do we got left? Public Works and Administration?
Public Works and Golf and Administration. And I don't think we can do either Public Works or Golf because I don't have everybody here.
Administration it is, though. Yeah. I mean, we can, is everybody prepared to go through Administration? There will have two left.
Sure not prepared, but I'll ask questions later.
Well, we're going to go through, the last day will be the, okay, let's see what we really need to do here. So if everybody's okay with that, I wouldn't mind banging out Administration. It's.
Let me turn it over to Scott.
I'm not known for being short-winded, but I'll do that here this evening. I'll go over some of the highlights very quickly. If you have any questions, please feel free to stop me, and I can, happy to answer those. Some of our highlights, I think groundbreaking and ribbon cuttings will continue to be a theme for the next year. What's not in this document when it was transcribed, but what we've learned recently through the counties, your, your office vacancy rate, your commercial vacancy rate, and your industrial vacancy rate are all at decade lows. So I think you'll continue to see that grow, especially with Project Oak developing on the Cook County side of Brewster Creek Park and what you see here at the streets of Bartlett and some future restaurants that'll be opening this year. One thing that you'll see that's a big highlight is our BETA program. It's no longer a pilot program. We've done it. We've seen what's worked, we've seen what hasn't worked. So we're going to be bringing some changes forward to you here in the next couple months for your review. New website will be a big part of what you see in terms of highlights. Chris and Gaby from our department have worked really hard on that. And I think you're going to see that the residents will be happy with the new dynamics of the website. Its functionality will be far superior. Decade at the Depot, 10-year anniversary. They've seen 12,000 people over the course of that time. Couple other highlights, our sister city is seen also having a 10-year anniversary. And again, if you feel, if you want me to expand on any of these highlights, please let me know. We spent a lot of time on the drinking water page, and that project is now complete. Skipping forward to the page seven, our budget, personnel services, no new positions. If you look at our activity measures, those are pretty consistent in the last year. I think with the water, the change in water, we saw a spike in website visits, so that may stabilize as well. Not too much because we are getting a new website, so we'll be advertising that quite a bit. We're going to continue to visit 100 businesses. We're very proud of that, and we'll continue to do that. Like I said, no new personnel requests, no capital outlay. This professional development is consistent with what you've seen the last several years. The only two changes is the administrator cut herself out of the national conference. And on the second page, I was budgeted to go this year for an out-of-state certification for economic development. I didn't do that. This is a lot cheaper, and I can do it from my desk here in Bartlett. So we went that route. No village tuition reimbursement. Our professional association detail is very consistent with what you see year to year. There's one new one for $40 and one last year that was $50 that we no longer have. So that's pretty consistent with what you see year to year. So there's no surprises on there. Taking you to page 14 of our line items, we're looking at a 7% increase. Printer costs are down, so service agreements are down. We are working on year two of not having a vehicle for administration. It's working out okay. So that's why you see a decrease in automobile supplies. Anybody have any questions before I move on to the next page? On the line item justification page, you'll see our BETA program and our continued ACE hardware sales tax rebate. There's no new changes there. Our community relations expenditures, you'll see no new changes there. In regards to the civic group funding, what we did was we took your guidance that you gave us last year and pretty much recommended the same exact amount that you recommended last year with a slight deduction because we did not receive a request from the Veterans Foundation. So the actual dollar amount that you'll be spending on your civic funding is less, but the dollar amount going to the civic groups will be the same based on your direction last year. We can certainly change that if you have any thoughts on the civic funding. And all the other costs on that page remain the same. If you don't have any questions, I'll move on to professional services.
Why is the legal fees, legal services, it's quite a bit higher than from 2018 and 19?
We've had a number of, we've had a number of personnel-related issues, and those are some of the things that we've talked about in executive session. And so that is something that we, was over and above what we normally budget for.
So that answers the question for that. And then everything else on here is relatively consistent with what you've seen last year. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Next time, I'll have some questions for you, Scott.
We spent, I'm not reading this correctly, I don't think, the engineering service, on page 17, the engineering services. I know we looked at the West Bartlett Overpass feasibility study.
Mm-hmm.
We didn't spend $60,000 on that, did we?
No, no. That says zero. What you're looking at is miscellaneous engineering services?
Okay. Thank you.
It was originally at $100,000, it was taken out, right?
Go ahead, Scott.
Right now, there's a lot of questionable factors in terms of conducting that study. One is the ongoing battle between CN and CP in Washington DC and not knowing the future of the Spalding Switching rail yard. Another major factor in that study is a stretch of 4.7 miles from Hoffman Estates to Spalding Road in terms of a double track that CN is proposing. So one of the concerns about completing that study would be not knowing what we're doing a study for because of those outlaying factors. We continue to monitor both of those issues, and both those issues, quite frankly, are very difficult to predict at this time.
How is train traffic over there currently on West Bartlett?
Currently, train traffic is down significantly ever since the temporary injunction that the STB issued. We can send you those numbers as well.
Is that because Trustee Ranky was so tough on them?
Absolutely.
Just in general, before we adjourn, again, I'll just reiterate that one of my pet peeves when you go through budgeting is when I see a long line item of, just for example, $8,000 we spent, $8,000 we spent, $8,000 we spent, and all of a sudden, we're budgeting that for $25,000 without any explanation. And then we come in the next year, and we've had a budget for $25,000, but we only spent $8,000 or $10,000 of it. So just in general, I'm going to have issues with things on this budget being finalized that are just pie in the sky or ballpark. And I know sometimes it's a big massive event when you're budgeting like this, and some of the smaller things, you might just want to ballpark, but I'm going to have an issue with passing a budget that is more of, I think we all understand what I'm saying, but yeah.
We'll take a look at the incremental creep, which is, I think, what you're concerned about.
Yeah, incremental creep drives me nuts. And so.
Okay.
That's all we have for the season.
All right. Thank you all for preparing so well. And we'll get information out about the potential change of the date, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't. If it does, it does. If that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Danny, seconded by Trustee Carbonaro. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Ranky.
Yeah.
Cameron.
Yes.
Carbonaro.
Yes.
Danny.
Yes.
Gabrenia.